It's August 10th, 2021. I'll call this meeting to order. And please ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Guess? Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to do the invocation.
Sure. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name and all the earth. God, you are wonderful and you're mighty. You are a great God, and you are greatly to be praised. Again, Father, we come into your presence, and we thank you for the privilege of being in this place. We thank you, God, for the privilege of serving, and we pray now that you would be in the midst of every decision that we make, everything that we say, and everything that we do, God, we pray that it will be glorifying to you, and that it will ultimately build our city. Father, we pray for each of us as commissioners. We pray for our mayor. We pray for our new city manager. We pray for the city of Paducah. We pray for the employees of the city of Paducah. Whatever we are standing in the need of, God, we thank you for it now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, just want to welcome our new city manager.
Thank you.
Darren Jordan. This is his first meeting. He hasn't breathed into the microphone yet, and so we'll get him, kick him off. And city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, great. All right, we have some new employee introductions tonight. Who's on first? Who's in charge? We've got a finance revenue technician.
Welcome.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's in charge, but we'll take care of this. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, John.
Huh?
I said, good evening.
Yes, sir. This is Angela Angie Stanfield, and Angie's, she just started just a few weeks ago. You should see her smiling face at our counter as our newest revenue technician in the finance department. Angie is a graduate of Illinois Eastern College. She's calm, she's smart, she's positive, and she's eager to learn, and we're glad to have Angie on board.
That's awesome. Welcome. Would you like to, would you like to say anything? Put you on the spot?
I'm excited to be here and to meet everyone. It's been so friendly and just been very welcoming.
Okay. Well, it's very nice to have you. You're working in a, in a department that is really at the top of their game, so you've got, you've got, you've got big shoes to fill there, so welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
So, human resources, Stephanie?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I would like to present to you the city's new Human Resources Generalist, Mackenzie Husky. Mackenzie is a graduate of Western Kentucky University, where she majored in Communication Studies and minored in Business Administration and Marketing. She began her HR career with Pilgrim's Pride in Mayfield as an HR Employment Coordinator focusing on recruitment and retention efforts for them. In the short time that Mackenzie has been with the city, she has already represented the city at the local career fair, created a new, new hire orientation manual, and jumped right into the HR software changes. Mackenzie was born and raised in Paducah and looks forward to growing her professional career here at home. Please allow me to introduce to you Mackenzie Husky.
Welcome. Hey, Mackenzie. Welcome.
Thank you.
Usually they shake hands, but I think we'll pass.
911?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. We're one short today due to a sickness, so we were had, we had four that we're going to introduce today, but we're just introducing three tonight. We'll bring the other one in once he gets out of quarantine.
Okay.
First, we'll introduce Emily Jones. Emily was born and raised here in Western Kentucky. She's a Paducah Timlin graduate. She's currently enrolled at Murray State University. Her father is in law enforcement. Her mom's a teacher. Her brother's in the Marine Corps, so there's no surprise that she chose public service as a career path right now. So, we're excited to have her. She's been on board for four months. Next up, we have Bryce Mansfield. Bryce may look familiar to you, as he's been on TV quite a lot in this community, but now he's, he belongs to us, and he works for us. He switched over to the other side, right? Bryce is a University of Louisville graduate. Obviously, you guys recognize him from working for WPSD for several years. He switched over to CFSP, but his desire for public service runs pretty deep in him, and so he decided to come work as a telecommunicator for us. He's also a volunteer firefighter for Concord. So, thank you, Bryce. Next, we have up is Cecilia Titsworth. She moved to Paducah a few years ago, back in 2016. She's originally from Memphis. She worked for probation and parole for several years, and we recruited her from there. And she didn't have a long walk, because probation and parole sits right there by the 911. Her commute really didn't change. But she's also going to school at West Kentucky University, majoring in criminology. So, that's three of the four that we had for you, and we'll get the next one here, hopefully, at the next commission meeting.
That's great. Thanks.
Welcome.
You guys want to say anything? You don't have to. You don't want to.
I bet Bryce would say something.
I'll ask him.
No, you're good. Welcome aboard.
You can hear his voice all the time on the radio.
Yeah, welcome aboard. It's great to have you, and 911's obviously very important to, to all the community, so Okay, before we get into the agenda items, I'm just going to mention that we are, the county came out with a policy yesterday, a mask policy, and the city reflected upon that today, and I'm going to be signing an order this evening that declares that anyone either vaccinated or unvaccinated will need to wear a mask inside City Hall until you get to your desk. And that's slightly different from the county. They decided to differentiate a bit between vaccinated and unvaccinated. We talked about that, kicked it around a lot this afternoon. I think it's really hard to police the people that are vaccinated and unvaccinated and checking cards, and I mean, it's, it would be a nightmare. So, we all hate the position that we're in right now with, with, with the virus. It's really spiked up. You know, I get a report every day from the Health Department, and probably six weeks ago, maybe even, maybe even only a month ago, I would get the report, and there was no infections in, in any of the counties surrounding us, but, and maybe just a few in McCracken County. But it has swelled in the, in recent weeks to where we're getting 25, 30 new ones every day or more, and the average age, no surprise, because the majority of populations 65 and older are, have been vaccinated, but the average age is, I would say, I looked at it one day, it's in the 30s, and so it's really changed a lot. So, I hope we don't have to do this long, but I will be, I will be signing this this And with that, I guess I would ask Bruce Wilcox to come up and, and give the board an update on economic development.
Thank you, Mayor Bray. Commissioners, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Parrish, on behalf of GPED staff and the GPED Board of Directors, we thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. In spite of the COVID restrictions that have been in place this year, GPED's been very successful, and we've been winning. So, we're proud of the things that we've been able to accomplish this year. During this year, we've been able to announce four projects resulting in $79 million of capital investment into our community, coupled with over 100 jobs. Utilizing our partnership with Murray State University and their M-Plan software, it's an economic modeling software, we know that these 100 direct jobs create an induced and indirect additional 137 jobs, so bringing the total job impact to 237 jobs. These jobs have a recurring economic impact on our community of over $33 million a year. The projects have been the new building out at the Commerce Park, the FBI, the ATF, the DEA offices and personnel. That's currently in, being constructed. We announced Blockware Mining. That was a $50 million capital investment project out in Industrial Park West, a cryptocurrency project. Millworks Products is a $2 million expansion of a local industrial manufacturer, and then Drake Lighting, which is a distributor of tower lighting. Most recently, last week, I think most all of you saw or heard the announcement of Drake with their purchase of the vacated ACBL building out at the Commerce Park. Drake will be employing 60 individuals out there, investing $2 million into the existing building and constructing a new 5,000-square-foot warehouse and distribution facility in the coming months. And it's anticipated that Drake will have an estimated impact on the economy of $6.8 million per year. Be looking for more announcements to come. We've got a lot of good things brewing right now, and we've got a few things that are teed up and ready to be announced in the very near future. Our success in landing these projects has also generated an additional need or a corresponding confidence with our utility partners. Paducah Water will be constructing a new 1-million-gallon water tank out at Industrial Park West. This has been on our books for some time, but this is a $6 million investment into Industrial Park West. Big Rivers Electric and Jackson Purchase Energy, they're investing $13 million into Industrial Park West to bring the utility, the electrical megawatt capacity up to 100 megawatts. And then Joint Sewer Agency is already in the engineering and the design work for taking sewers out to the Triple Rail Site. So, all in all, these utility infrastructures represent an additional $20 million into our local economy or community to better position us for economic development. Additionally, on behalf of the IDA, we've sold acreage at retail at market value, generating $135,000 of revenue for the IDA. That money will be used to further development properties for future economic development purposes, and that represents the first time in almost 20 years that we've sold land at market value in Industrial Park West. So, we're proud of that accomplishment. And you might be interested to know that we recently, recently received the county's TVA in lieu of tax money, $164,000. I know that's been a talk, a topic of interest here, but that came through DLG, and we've gotten that. So, hopefully, that'll put that issue to rest, and we can move forward there. All in all, to put the icing on the cake, GPED's been a part of, over the past 12 to 14 months, of bringing in right at $5 million for our community. So, we're really proud of that and been proud that we've been able to generate additional cash flow and cash back to the city, to the county, to the IDA. Got a short presentation for you here. I've got a lot more for you in closed session, where I'll share the good stuff with you on the projects that we have going, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have right now.
How many, how many jobs came with FBI, DEA, ATF? Do you know?
It's undisclosed. We called that Project James Bond. We know what the capital investment is, and they never would share the personnel count.
I did meet one of the people. I think that was, actually, it's maybe running the office that, that had moved here early on, you know, as the project got going, but I just...
There's a, there's a private company actually constructing the building, and then they'll be leasing it back to the government. So, good stuff.
Questions? We all good? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Would any commissioner like any item removed for separate, separate discussion?
No.
Okay. I'll ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the July 27, 2021 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Paxton Park Golf Board, DBA Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course, in an amount of $85,000 for specific services, and authorizing the Finance Director to transfer funds to said board.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, we'll move to municipal orders, and I guess I would ask the city clerk to read the first municipal order.
I propose...
Sorry, I was just, this is really a big, a very large initiative for us, and it has to do with the combination of West McCracken Water District along, with Paducah Water. And so, we'll talk about it after she reads the motion, but go ahead.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing Paducah Water Works Merging With the West McCracken County Water District."
So moved.
Second.
Bruce?
All right. Good evening again. On behalf of Greater Paducah Economic Development, West McCracken Water District, Paducah Water, McCracken County, and the City of Paducah, I'm pleased to present this evening's municipal order requesting approval and authorization of the merger between Paducah Water Works and the West McCracken County Water District. GPED's mission is to proactively recruit companies to our community and support those already here. Within our mission, we strive to better position our community for future economic growth. Having solid utility infrastructure with competitive rates is a necessity. Ms. Parrish, if we could go to the service territory slide? There we go. It's no secret that we believe our best large-scale economic development opportunity is at our Triple Rail Site in West Paducah. From this slide, you can see that water service to the west of Paducah is fragmented. The blue portion there represents the service area of Paducah Water. The yellow area represents areas served by West McCracken Water District, and the pink area is what we consider the Triple Rail Site. Earlier this year, we were responding to a, an RFI, a request for information, on a project that required 80 million gallons of water a month. It was a very large, extremely large consumer of water. Heather Pierce, our project manager and Paducah Water Board member, recognized an opportunity knowing that West McCracken Water Board supply of water came through Paducah Water, and the West McCracken Water rates were higher. So, she saw an opportunity to address an issue in attracting prospective large-scale customers. As it turns out, it was a big win for most all of the West McCracken residents. Heather, acting as a catalyst to see if there was an additional interest, reached out to McCracken County Judge Executive Craig Clymer, along with then-Paducah Water Manager Bill Robertson. Through Judge Clymer's discussions with West McCracken Water District Chair Benny Hetty and their Board of Directors, it was apparent this would be a big win for the residents of West McCracken County, existing businesses, schools, and economic development. Now, Ms. Parrish, if we could go to the rate slide. We applaud the leadership of West McCracken County Water Board Chair Hetty and their Board of Directors, along with the collaborative partnership with Judge Clymer and the Paducah Water team. Overall, most of the 1,500 West McCracken County customers will see, on average, a rate decrease of 20% to 50% in their water bills. An average family of four, consuming 4,000 to 5,000 gallons of water per month, should see about a 30% to 33% decrease in their monthly bill. Paducah Water uses a declining block rate structure, which means the more water you consume, the lower the cost of the water. This is a tremendous win for our West McCracken schools, large industrial consumers, and future large-scale development projects. Large-scale consumers, as you can see, consuming over a million gallons per month, should see a 50% decrease in their monthly bills. Existing water, Paducah Water customers, they will not see any change in their water bills or their rates. So, again, we applaud the efforts of Heather Pierce, Judge Clymer, the West McCracken County Water Board, and the Paducah Water Board, and you, Mayor Bray. Commissioner Guess isn't here this evening, but Commissioner Guess is the city commission representative on the Paducah Water Board, and we applause his support as well. Before we formally ask for your motion to approve the ordinance, leader, Commissioner, Board Chair Hetty, he'd like to address the commission and make a few comments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. I want to thank the good Lord for giving me an opportunity and a mind to serve. I've served on the West McCracken County Water Board for 19 years now, ranging from treasurer, secretary, and now chairman of that board. We, we, the, the commission of West McCracken, we went through with, with Paducah Water and seeing the, the difference in rates and so forth, and what this would do, and we all made a mind up that we would not stand up the way, stand in the way of economic development for Paducah McCracken County. So, it is a pleasure for us to be able to join together and merge with Paducah Water. Was it an easy thing? No, it was not an easy thing. Our district consists of 1,500 customers plus. We do that with three employees. We have a revenue of, income of about a million dollars a year, and 300,000 of that a year is paid back to Paducah Water for the purchase of safe, clean water that they provide us with. So, I want to say thank you, starting out with Bill Robertson, who started this, who I went to and started this thing going. Of course, Bill retired, and Jason took it over. But I want to say, and for this board, I want to say, that this has been a most pleasant transition that you could even imagine. They have really made this easy, and we, we want to thank Paducah Water. We want to thank the Paducah Water Board. We want to thank everyone that's involved in this. No, it wasn't easy decisions. No, and nothing good is easy. So, yes, I lost nights of sleep, thought about this, but when it all boiled down to it, we realized that it was time that we do something more to even make our water district greater. So, I want to say to each and every one involved, thank you. I want to say to this commission, thank you for giving me an opportunity to, to speak. I remember back in 1965 and 66, when the water district was formed, and I was about 11-year-old, and I run behind the plumbers and laborers that put that water line in, playing on the dirt. Never, never, never in my wildest dream that I think that I would become chairman of the board of this water district. So, to the people of West McCracken, thank you for allowing me to be your chairman, to, to head your water district. I hope that we have done a great job. The reason why we are doing this is because we want West McCracken Water to remain great, remain strong, and this is why we make these tough decisions, but in the long run, we want to see that our younger people will see that we're glad what they done. So, again, I want to say thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. Any comments from, questions from commissioners?
It's a great thing.
It is a great thing, and it's, it's a step forward for, for the community, and Benny, the community owes you. Thanks for your leadership over the years. The entire community does, and we appreciate, applaud you and, and the board for looking forward to see what's best for the community. We, that's, that's what we're all looking for, is trying to do a lot more of that, thinking all, thinking about our community as a whole instead of individually. So, with that, city clerk, would you like to call roll?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, the next item is the MOU relative to the Sports Tourism Commission. I bet nobody's ever heard about that. And one of the things, we're going to make a quick change. I think we have, we have at least one comment, and we're going to move the comment for this before we actually take our vote, so we give this person a chance to talk. But first of all, would you like to call, I'm sorry, read the, read the municipal order?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving a Memorandum of Understanding with the County of McCracken and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission Regarding Funding of the Paducah McCracken County Athletic Complex and Authorizing the Execution of All Documents Related to Same."
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Tracy, would you like to make your comments?
Welcome, new city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. It's great, it's very nice to see you tonight. I have basically two types of comments I'd like to make regarding this MOU, and I'd like to precede that with a statement of, "The athletic complex proposal and project is a good project, and Paducah needs and deserves that." My comments are related to doing it a fiscally responsible way and having a project that everyone can be proud of, not just now, but in the future. Regarding the finances in this memorandum of understanding, and forgive me, I've only had like a day to go through this, but the way I understand it is, we have bond money for 17 and a half million, or no, 12 and a half million from the county and the city, and it acknowledges in the MOU that there's an unfunded 17 million, 17 and a half million that's going to have to be come about in some way unless the project scope is greatly I believe it's not prudent to go forward with a memorandum of understanding, and I understand that's, that's not the final agreement, but it is your, the MOU for the final agreement, to have that big of a, of a deficit unanswered and unallocated in terms of how we're going to pay for it. It, it does go into the, the tourist room tax. However, we, we all know that the first year, year or two of any project, you rarely receive the monies that you think you will receive. Other athletic field complexes across the United States have operated first few years at a deficit usually. Some come out and aren't at a deficit, and others, others still remain in deficit. And then the final point is the fact that the design of the project, which was done in February, had the fact that it has, in my opinion, next to no public comment and review and discussion. No trend, no transparency, if you will. A couple years ago, we... A couple of years ago, we had numerous stakeholder meetings for when the city was trying to get money from the state in terms of the TIF project. This project, we're spending millions of dollars, and there is virtually no public input forums for neighborhoods and common folk. You may have your vested interest, having provided comments and receiving detailed plans, but the populace as a whole has had very little formal ways to provide that input. And as a Padukan, I believe I'm paying twice on this project, so I think I should have at least one good say-so. And that's my comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. So let's discuss anything that people want to talk about. I'll give you a little bit of insight. You know, the judge and I have been in discussions about, you know, about the sports complex for, you know, for some time, trying to work through. I think it's pretty much public knowledge that the county came to us some months ago and asked us to go into partnership with them. And part of that agreement was asking the county to go in partnership with us on an aging 911 system, which I think that, you know, we'll be voting on that MOU here in just a moment as well. I believe we were successful in that right. But it also has been a concern of mine to make sure that we were going about it, to Ms. Tracy's comments, in a fiscally responsible manner. And so, you know, we are utilizing 12 and 1/2 million dollars of our bond money, and then there is an estimated $42 million for the project. So that leaves, when you throw in our 12 and 1/2, the county's 12 and 1/2, that leaves 17 and 1/2 extra. We did take a hard look at the sports tourism tax or the room tax, the county room tax, if you will. COVID made a big impact on that negatively, but the last few months, it's come back, it's come back a lot. It's been very robust. And we believe that the traffic, the hotel traffic that will be generated by this new complex will be a real shot in the arm to help increase the room tax. And 80% of that room tax that's collected will, in fact, go toward debt service. So there's a gap beyond that, based upon current estimates. You know, in year one, under the circumstances we're in now, it wouldn't cover it 100%. So, you know, the city and the county are going to have to chip in to get it started. But also, when you point out, and thank you, you know, that some facilities operate at a profit and some don't. And I have to give kudos to our sports commission. They've been working really hard on this project. They're already talking with people that are going to help manage the project once it gets up and going. And one of the things that they're already talking about at this point is starting to plan for when teams can come in and use our facilities 12, 18, 24 months in advance. One of the mistakes that the sports complexes have made in the past is they've waited too late to start planning. And so the first year, you know, the deficit's even larger because they haven't planned. So I don't think there's, I don't think there's, there's no guarantees in life, and certainly there's risk with this project. I'd be the first to admit. But, you know, relative to public comment or relative to comments from, I guess you'd say, the community, I don't believe I've ever been involved with a project that had any more vocal support. You know, from maybe not every single person in the community, but it's been, to me, it's been overwhelming, the support. And so there's been a lot of initiative on the part of the city to become a full partner with the county. And so there's a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of time has gone into this, and I'm certain that the MOU is not perfect. And I'm certain that there's, you know, there have to be things that will be, have to be cleaned up and i's dotted and t's crossed when we get to the interlocal agreement, which will really be the document, you know, that will move us forward. But I feel good about the place that we're in right now. I feel positive about the opportunity that we have to bring this project to Paducah and McCracken County and increase significantly the sports tourism that's going to come to this town. So those would be some of my comments. I'm happy to listen to anyone else have comments.
I'm good with this. I think that there, once this is signed, there will be more time for final design, and so there will be opportunity for more input. I believe that that will be now, that they can work on the final design. Also, I'm more pleased with the funding than when we first were approached, asking for 20 million or more, and there was no inclusion of the funding from the sports commission. So I think we've come a long way in including everybody, and to me, the original intent of the MOU on the sports commission to form that so that there would be money set aside for projects like this. So we've come a long way. I know you've spent a lot of time on it, so thank you for your efforts, and I want us to just sign the agreement. We were at a signing yesterday between WKCTC and Murray State on an articulation agreement for them, and I looked at the mayor and said, "Let's do this soon with the county to get this going." I don't want us to delay anymore because then we just would miss another season. So let's get going.
I agree wholeheartedly. I caught the mayor before the meeting to talk to him a little bit about the...
And she was hungry.
I was nice. Kind of gently say, but I had a lot of questions about the 911 agreement and the timing between the two, because it's important for us to be fiscally responsible. One is a need, the other, in my opinion, is a want. Now, we need it for economic development. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But from my perspective, 911 is certainly a need. The sports complex is a want in our grand scheme of things. So for me, it's important to make sure that we have the need of the system that we currently own met and then can contribute. So the timing of those two things, and I had several questions about that MOU, but as he assured me, the interlocal's coming, and that'll be the time to dot the i's and cross the t's. Then I got much nicer, didn't I?
And then Commissioner Galt brings up a really good point. I mean, these projects are not co-timed. I mean, you know, so there's really uncertainty about, you know, when we'll get to the 911. I mean, I'm hoping that we get the study back by the end of this month. All indications are that we will. And the MOU, which we'll read in just a moment, establishes, you know, the five-person board, you know, to get us going, take us forward. So, you know, we've got work to do on both sides, on both sides.
And Mayor, to be fair, all kidding aside, I know how hard you have worked on this, and this has been something that you have spent day and night on, on both of these MOUs, and we appreciate that. I know that you view that as your job, but at the same time, it makes a difference when someone takes it as personally as you have and dug in, and it makes a difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to say, there've been a lot of great projects in our community that a lot of people have been involved with. You know, the Carson Center, 40 million-plus project, the Expo Center, when we had to build that to expand the convention center, those were mentioned. Those have all been great projects that were game changers at the time for our community. And I think this is a great project that will be a game changer for us in the future.
I agree, and hopefully it's the first of many 40 million-dollar-plus projects, put it that way.
I think we have a couple coming up.
Okay, without further ado, City Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Okay, City Clerk, would you read the MOU, I'm sorry, the next municipal order on the 911?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving a Memorandum of Understanding with the County of McCracken Regarding E-911 Partnership and Formation and Authorizing the Execution of All Documents Related to SANG."
So moved.
Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments on this one. And Commissioner Galt and I did talk before the meeting. I mean, this is, this MOU does not have as much detail around it, and it's certainly a memorandum of understanding is aspirational anyway. Each of these MOUs are aspirational. But this one in particular still has some uncertainty around it because we don't have the study, we don't know what the cost is going to be, we don't have the latest estimate of cost, we haven't really gotten into looking at possibility of new funding sources. So there's a lot of meat on the bone, as they say, on this particular one. But this was an excellent accomplishment by all of us, and in particular for the county to come in with us as full partners on this project. So it was the way that they, the path forward that they showed us, that they would commit, and we're appreciative of their support. So did you have any particular comments you want to bring up now?
No, no. I'm good. Timing and hammering out the details, those are the two.
Okay.
Good.
Good?
Good.
Okay, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Okay, we have some ordinances to adopt for tonight, and this is the second, these are second readings, and the first one is zoning text amendment for new land uses. So City Clerk, would you read it?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 126 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to define and permit cottage homes with certain requirements. These types of homes could be a minimum of 140 square feet and would be permitted in the B1 convenience and service zone and higher intensity zones. Manufactured homes, mobile homes, campers, recreational vehicles, storage buildings, shipping containers, and/or sheds are not considered to be cottage homes. Further, this amendment defines and allows short-term rentals and special event short-term rentals, which are rented less than 30 consecutive days in certain zones. This amendment also allows for the construction of a single-family home on a smaller building lot than 8,000 square feet, provided setbacks are met and the floor-to-area ratio is not less than 10%. Allows the outdoor sale of food items, vegetables, fruits, and garden implements. Allows multifamily structure density to be determined by the Kentucky Building Code in the B1 convenience and service zone and higher intensity zones. Allows seasonal fireworks, tents in the B3 general business zone and higher intensity zones, and allows only commercial uses in the front 2/3 of the ground floor of buildings in the H1 historic commercial zone.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we talked about this last week, or two weeks ago. Want to make sure there's no, I didn't get any feedback on this one particularly. If anybody else did.
No, Josh, I'm sorry.
Well, Commissioner Henderson had asked for a tutorial on it at the meeting last two weeks ago, and I appreciate him letting me join in with him yesterday for a full session about this and some others. So great job to the planning department on updating us a little bit more about it.
Yeah.
I think there might be some opportunity for more housing in some way, and people just be creative and work with us, we might be able to do that, so.
It was good time. I understood it all alone. I just wanted to make sure that Josh knew what he was talking about. But no, it is a great operation. Well, no, yeah. But it was a good tutorial, and I'm ready to move forward with it. A good picture of what we have.
Now, yesterday, I asked him to bring a picture of what it might be, but that's okay. We looked at them online yesterday even for some of those homes.
There's some back here, I think.
Oh, okay. It's not on the screen. Okay.
Yeah, the very back of.
Yeah, of what's not allowed and what is allowed. So there are some specific requirements that I think could be some really nice opportunities, some really cool things that might happen. Thank you for these.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, would you call roll?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one's a text amendment on mobile food vehicles. I did get some feedback on this today, so please read it, if you would.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, related to mobile food vehicles. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section 126-87 Mobile Food Vehicles of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to find food tents in accordance with the Kentucky Building Code, allow them as an exemption in the highway business district, and provide specific guidance for food, for the regulation of food tents in the B2 downtown business zone and in higher intensity zones. This amendment allows mobile food vehicles to operate closer than 100 feet to a brick-and-mortar restaurant with the specific written consent of said restaurant, and removes the 14-day time period in which mobile food vehicles must move. Further, mobile food vehicles are proposed to be located on Broadway between Waters Street and North 7th Street, Clarence Gaines Street, 2nd Street, within 100 foot of a residence if a generator is utilized that is 72 decibels or less.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll kick off here. I got a call from a downtown resident, and just asking, expressing some concern about what would be the circumstances specifically on Broadway if you had a lot of food trucks down there. What would be the circumstances under which a lot of food trucks might be down there? What would be allowed? What wouldn't be allowed? And so there was an ensuing, I got with Josh. I agree with you all, he knows his stuff. And he gave me a good overview of the project, and we kind of walked through the scenarios of what might or might not happen. You know, and I think what you're really trying to do here is balance the fact that you've got people, got residents living downtown, and we want more of that. In the long run, we want more people living downtown. But at the same time, people want to come down to celebrate, and we got the new EDC, and in one of these days, COVID, we're going to come out of COVID, and things are going to be more back normal, and those things at times can clash, or let's say, you know, just rub up against each other. So we have to figure out a way to, you know, to work through that. But at the end of the day, in my conversation, they were okay with moving forward under our current circumstances. They just wanted to understand more about what the circumstances would be and how that would. So Josh, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about our conversation?
Sure. The first thing I'd like to point out is the Paducah Planning Commission did meet on July 8th, and they are forwarding a favorable recommendation as presented tonight. Some of the key points within this text amendment is food trucks... Some of the key points within this text amendment is food trucks are allowed on Broadway if they don't use generators. And that's the kicker in this text amendment, that if they do utilize the public infrastructure and can plug in where they don't use a generator, then they can be allowed there. However, if they do need a generator, they do have to have a generator that's proposed to be 72 decibels or less, and that is about like a standard household vacuum cleaner. The Paducah Planning Commission did express some concerns with some noise for the upper story residents. Staff did some research, and we presented that to them at the July 8th meeting, and they did adopt that as part of the text amendment, which they forwarded to you with the positive recommendation.
Okay.
So what we talked about yesterday, really, the changes are that we are complying now with the state when they remove the 14-day moving, and the fact that if a food truck locates in front of a restaurant, the restaurant has to approve it.
Correct.
Those, from what I understood from our meeting yesterday, those are the only changes. The food trucks could already be located on Broadway since the food truck ordinance was introduced in 2017?
Correct.
So that part about then the generator is also new, as long as it's under the 72 decibels?
Yes, that is correct.
And it is a recommendation from the planning commission?
Correct. And also part of this text amendment is the food tents, which we had mentioned, and I wanted to reiterate a little bit on that, that this stemmed from the convention center needing help from planning with food tents to help alleviate some of the pressure that they've been getting with the food trucks at those.
You know, I think the good news here is that, you know, after a long conversation, the residents, you know, realized the advantage of food trucks and, you know, want to coexist, so they're not anti-food truck, you know, they just needed to understand, you know, better, and I assured them that, you know, we wanted a win-win-win here for everybody, and that we, you know, that that's what it really had to be. You know, an interesting positive thing that came out of the discussion was, you know, and I guess we talked about, you know, the residents getting together and having their own, like, commission or board or some working group, you know, so that they could, as a group, you know, meet and talk about some of the things that they want to accomplish downtown, you know, and maybe be represented, and I thought that was a great idea. You know, we need more representation, so I think in the long run, we want more residents downtown, and so that's, that's our goal, so. Great job this afternoon, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm always excited about what's going on, and I'm excited about the food trucks as well. But I think you're going to know that I'm going to keep asking the same question until we get an answer that's satisfying, and that is, how do we take away the potential of discrimination from one food truck for another? And maybe I'm the only one that thinks that that's a concern, but I am interested in that.
Sure. Commissioner Henderson, I appreciate that question. Staff did take a look at, is if we just completely took out that part of the zoning ordinance to let food trucks allowed to locate anywhere they would like next to a brick-and-mortar, we would have a lot of brick-and-mortar restaurants upset at us, so.
I understand that.
So there, in staff's opinion, there does need to be some sort of mechanism to allow that if they would like. It goes back to the taco and the hamburger discussion. I'm selling pizza over here, tacos may be okay, pizza's not, that sort of thing. So when, it gets right down to it, to the nitty-gritty of that conversation, that really comes down to people, if they are found to be discriminating, for them to report it and for it to be advanced through those avenues.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it, but you know, sometimes discrimination is hard to prove.
Yeah.
You just, you just know it happened, but you can't necessarily prove it all the time. So I'm good, I just, and again, I want to say, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just looking down the road. I've seen it happen quite often where people have been discriminated against, and you can't prove it, they know that they didn't get a fair shake, and I just want to make sure that everybody who wants to be wherever they want to be can be there without any hassle.
Sure.
And I don't know if we could, you know, Bowling Green seems to be our reference place, but I don't know if we can go to some other cities to see if that's an issue for them, or to see how they've handled that issue, but it is a concern for me.
Sure.
So.
And one of the things that we did mention yesterday as well, is that the actual radius could be reduced from that 100 feet to perhaps 50 feet. That would open up a lot more opportunity potentially for food trucks to locate closer to a brick-and-mortar restaurant while still giving the brick-and-mortar restaurant some control over who's their next-door neighbor.
Here, here. I'm good. Commissioner Galt, you have a concern on your face?
No, I was, I was just thinking through, years ago, there was a similar kind of discussion, it wasn't food trucks, but it was about peddlers, vendors coming in and selling certain things, and the same pizza taco conversation, but it was.
So you've had the conversation before?
Yeah, yeah, basically, no, basically, and it was just in a different context. And I think the signature was the only way that they, back then, came up with, you know, everyone being an agreeance.
Signature?
Like from the, where they have to have permission from.
The restaurant has to sign up.
The restaurant has to sign, you know, they have to have permission. That was the same kind of, like the business owner, if you were going to set up outside, then that business owner had to sign and give permission. It was, that's what was triggering in my head, I don't remember all the details, but it was a similar conversation. I didn't mean to have that look.
Are we, are we good to vote? Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, sir.
Clerk, would you call roll? Thank you, Josh.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you all. Mr. Jordan, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Sess. City Clerk, would you read the next, the next ordinance?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to create Article 5 related to mobile food vehicle inspections. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance creates Article 5 Mobile Food Vehicle Inspections of Chapter 46 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Paducah Code of Ordinances for the purpose of implementing a fee of $50 for each mobile food vehicle inspection performed by the Paducah Fire Prevention Division for the City of Paducah Mobile Food Vehicles. Further, this ordinance authorizes and empowers the Paducah Fire Prevention Division to perform inspections for mobile food vehicles which operate outside of city limits but within McCracken County as required by the McCracken County Fiscal Court. Said inspections for McCracken County Mobile Food Vehicles shall be performed at a cost of $50. Said inspection shall be valid for one calendar year from the date of issuance, and subsequent renewal inspections shall be at a fee of $50 per inspection.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, this is the second reading, any questions? We beat this one to death. Okay, you can call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, now, the famed remote workers incentive program that we've been working so hard on, kudos to Catherine and Nick and anybody that's worked on the program, we really appreciate all the hard work that you put into this, so. Would you go ahead and read that, please?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing the Remote Workers Incentive Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah, Kentucky hereby establishes the City Remote Workers Incentive Program with certain conditions and/or requirements. In order to be eligible to participate in the City Remote Workers Incentive Program, an applicant employee must be 21 years old or older, be a U.S. citizen, lawful permanent resident, or have other credentials necessary to work in the United States, live at least 100 miles outside of the limits of the City of Paducah at the time of application for the city remote workers incentive program, work full-time for a company in which all offices are located at least 100 miles outside the limits of the City of Paducah, be able to perform a majority of their employment duties remotely from a home office or co-working space located inside the City of Paducah limits, acquire primary residency in the City of Paducah within three months of acceptance into the program, agree to retain primary residence in the City of Paducah for at least one year beyond the initial 12-month program, and not be a participant in any other publicly funded program initiative. Individuals accepted into the City Remote Workers Incentive Program may be eligible to receive up to $2,500 reimbursement for expenses associated with relocating to the City of Paducah, up to $70 per month reimbursement for fees associated with the provision of internet services for a period of 12 months, and a waiver of City of Paducah payroll taxes for 12 months.
So moved?
Second.
We ready to get going?
Center the better.
Okay. Catherine, there are like 30 people lined up, ready to go, or? That'll have to do for tonight, okay? All right, City Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're going to introduce an ordinance tonight. This is the approval of an interlocal agreement with the county on Barclay Regional Airport Authority. This is something also we've been working on for a very long time, so I'll let the, I'll let the City Clerk read it, and then we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing and approving an interlocal agreement with the County of McCracken and the Barclay Regional Airport Authority regarding local share payment of the airport terminal project in an estimated amount of $5,800,000 to be funded equally by the City of Paducah and the County of McCracken, and authorizing the execution of all documents related to SANG. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes and approves an interlocal cooperation agreement by and between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken County, Kentucky, and the Barclay Regional Airport Authority to set forth the portions of the local share of the Barclay Regional Airport Terminal Project, which will be funded by the city, and what portion of the local share of the project will be funded by the county. The local share is estimated to be $5,800,000, and the interlocal cooperation agreement commits the city to provide funding to cover 50% of the local share. A final local share in excess of $6 million is subject to a full review of the Paducah City Commission and the McCracken County Fiscal Court.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so this is, this is, this is an interlocal agreement. We went straight to an interlocal agreement, we didn't have to go through an MOU or anything of that nature. The sitting county had already agreed that we were going to fund up to $3 million out of our, from the city standpoint, out of the bond fund, the funds that we have available. So they went on and drafted, the airport actually drafted this interlocal agreement, and I made a slight change in it, a slight edit in sort of capping our involvement at, at least initially at $3 million. It's estimated to be 5.8, so 2.9 each, but I wanted to just put in there that if it were over $6 million, then we would have to come back and approve the additional amount, just in order to be prudent so that we talked about it. So that really was the only substantive change that was made to the original interlocal agreement. And I think, you know, from a positive standpoint, it's, we've been working on this terminal, you know, for a couple of years now. Mr. Wilson's been very involved, I've been very involved, a lot of people in the community have been very involved. We've been scratching dirt out there, we've done the last two sets of bids. The last bid for the terminal itself came in 30% below construction estimates, so that was good news. Always say competition makes the world go round, and so that definitely, I think, made a difference. And so we've got, we're working on to make sure that we get our funding from the FAA for the major portion of it. We're also looking at a fundraising opportunity in the community that not only would help close the gap on some funding for the terminal, but also help us explore additional air service. I think one of the, one of the things that we hear a lot from the community, you know, is that we just go through one, you know, one location, Chicago, and we hear a lot of input, we want southern flights, we'd like to have a direct flight here, direct flight there. You know, in a community our size, that's going to require, that's going to require an investment from this community, most likely to bring a new airline in, and so that's going to have to be funded. And so we're going to be looking at ways to help us get off the mat and get started with something like that, so. That's all I got. It's the first reading. Thoughts?
Well, I was just going to kind of summarize, so we approved 12.5 million tonight of the bond money for the sports complex, which that money was raised for sports, so that's good. This 3 million, you're at 2.8 to 3 million, would also come from the bond money.
Correct.
And I'm anticipating we're leaving money for 911 in the bond money.
Correct, and, you know, and then, you know, the Civic Center, you know, that project's.
And some of the other projects that are on our priorities, but I know we.
Right.
We're going to set some aside for 911.
Right. And, you know, in terms of what we've done, you know, I mean, in, you know, in the first seven months that we've been here, we've also approved $4 million for stormwater.
Right.
You know, at our last meeting, so, got a lot more work to do, but I think we've been hard at work, trying to, you know, trying to spend the money wisely, so. Okay. So here we have Chief Laird, welcome, Brian. He is going to give us a community policing update. We've had a lot going on in the community, you know, in the last 60 days from the standpoint of, of things we'd rather not see go on in the community relative to some crime, and so I know that Chief Laird is as concerned as all of us, and so appreciate you being here, Brian.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Clerk. As the mayor said, over the past couple of months, we've had some violence in our community that unfortunately we're not immune to, as a lot of places across the country are seeing as well. But that has caused some concern with myself, with the mayor, as well as with the public, and that's one of the reasons why I want to come here tonight. Want to hopefully share some information with you and the members of our community that will provide some clarity and hopefully ease some of those concerns. Got a brief slideshow that I want to go through and kind of show you some statistics that we have, both nationally and locally. Want to thank our crime analyst, Michael Zadar, for pulling all those numbers as well as crunching the data for us as well. He's an important component to that. So this first slide that we have up here, this is just 20 years' worth of violent crime across the entire United States. So these are stats that are compiled by the FBI. As I said, it represents 20 years, you see basically a slow, steady decrease since about the year 2000 with violent crime across the United States. This next one here is the violent crime rate in the City of Paducah. So that starts in the year 2000 and goes to 2020. As you can see, we've seen a much greater decrease over that 20-year period within the city as compared to the national average. So comparatively, we're doing much better than the national average across the United States. These next couple of slides are going to take a look at property crime, which is important to us given the amount of retail establishments that we have, and this is what affects most people. So this is the national trend over those last 20 years. 2020 is not on there because it takes a while for the, all the communities across the country to report their crime stats into the FBI, and that's where this information comes from. But you see that slow, steady decrease, and then this is Paducah's crime rate. So you see a pretty good drop in that 2004, 2007 timeframe, and then it stays fairly steady from year to year. You see a big drop between 2019 and 2020. That was a decrease due to the pandemic, but fortunately what we're seeing right now is our, all of our crime numbers are trending very closely to 2020. The one thing that jumped out for us as we reviewed our year-to-date numbers was that so far this year, our burglary reports are down almost 40%. that so far this year, our burglary reports are down almost 40%. And so what that means is there's less homes and businesses being broken into as compared to previous years. One of the things I wanted to mention, I get asked quite a bit, I know Commissioner Wilson has asked me about this a few times, and so I wanted to, to kind of highlight this as well. But every year, there's different websites and publications that put out information about the safest cities in Kentucky or the safest cities across the United States, and a lot of times Paducah doesn't rate very high with those. And I know that the commission gets questions about that, I get questions about that as well. So when that, when I first started seeing that, we did some research, I did some, our crime analyst did some research on that as well. And what we found is that the way they gather that data is they take the, our crime statistics, and they compare that against our population from the census, which is around 25,000. We all know Paducah is a lot bigger than 25,000 people. The Chamber of Commerce and other organizations all estimate our population to be in the $100,000 or $100,000 range on a daily basis. So when you compare our crime rate against that 100,000 number, the people that are actually in our community every day, our crime rate is very good. And that's one of the main reasons why Paducah continues to be a safe place to live, as well as visit. Earlier, we looked at some of the basic crime graphs and crime trends, so what I wanted to do now is look at some more in-person, what we call person-based offenses. These are numbers so far this year. What we did is we compared them to the last five years. So the numbers on the far right, the ones in the blue, and then the, the single one that's there in the red, show basically how we're doing in 2021, year-to-date, and that's compared to the five-year average of crime in Paducah. You can see every category shows significant decreases in crime across the city, except for one category, which is aggravated assaults. Those aggravated assaults, that category's been trending upward in the last couple of years, and basically what that category is, is major felony assaults, things like shootings, stabbings, someone being shot at, someone being injured significantly in some, in a bar fight or, or anything like that. So far this year, we're actually less than, if you look at that number, than we were this time last year in 2020. Our crime analysis also looked at similar-sized cities in Kentucky, like Hopkinsville and Owensboro and Elizabethtown, just to see where, where we're, where are we in, as we look at crime in, in the state of Kentucky? Where do we rank in that? And what we found is, is that their numbers are very similar to what ours are. So some are just a little bit better than us, and some are a little bit worse than us. The one thing that we know is that guns are directly related to violent crime, and what we did is put together a brief snapshot of what we're seeing when it comes to guns in our community. So these are the number of guns that officers have collected over the past couple of years related to investigations. If you look at those numbers, you'll see in 2018, we had a, a pretty good spike there. And what we'll do is take a direct look at the slide that you seen earlier that showed the historical crime in, in Paducah, and you look at 2018, and you see that little bit of a spike there, and that's a direct correlation to the number of guns that we collected, because that's an increase in violent crime. Unfortunately, so far this year, if you look at that number, we've collected more than 60 guns, which puts us on pace to have a significant increase over the past couple of years. To further demonstrate that correlation between gun crime, between gun and crime, we also looked at the number of arrests that we've made for firearm possession by convicted felons. As you can see, those numbers also spiked in 2018, so you can see that direct correlation between guns collected, violent crime, and felons in possession of firearms. So far this year, we've made 30 arrests, and these, this data is just about a week and a half old, so those numbers may have elevated since then. We made 30 arrests for felons possessing firearms. Unfortunately, this is something that we see on a regular basis, where we have repeat offenders with guns. An example of this occurred over the weekend, when we arrested an individual that had, who's a felon, who had a handgun, he had several fully loaded, high-capacity magazines. We were able to take those on a traffic stop. Officers doing self-initiated activity and, and was able to recover that. The important thing to note out of that is, two weeks prior to that, we arrested that same individual for possession of a firearm by convicted felon in a stolen car. So we're, we're spinning our wheels there a little bit. But situations just like this, that's part of the reason why we're starting to see that uptick in violence, not only here in our community, but also in communities across Kentucky and across the United States. I also think it emphasizes the danger that our officers are facing on a daily basis as well. As you can see from the numbers, we're encountering a lot of guns, and I also feel like it's important to note that every one of those, every time that an officer encounters a gun on a traffic stop or on the side of the road, those are potential deadly force situations that, that they're encountering on a regular basis. Another question that we get a lot is, who's committing the crime in Paducah? Do we have a gang problem? Is it gangs? I think we can all agree that people's behavior has changed over the past couple of years. The norm as we once knew it, when it come to humanity and how people treat each other, seems to be different now than what it was two years ago. So we, through our crime analysis, as well as several large organizations that we subscribe to, look at crime, and crime has been studied significantly. One of the things that we see, and that holds true here in Kentucky and here in Paducah as well, is that the number of people, the people that commit crime is a very small number of people within the community, and that's no different here in Paducah. The majority of residents and visitors to our community are law-abiding citizens, and what we don't see are major groups of people committing organized crime here in Paducah. That doesn't mean that we don't have people in our community who have affiliations with certain groups or certain gangs that ultimately influence their decision. But like I said, we don't see that large gang organizations committing crime here in Paducah. We're continuing our efforts. The question is, is what are we doing about it? What are we doing to try to, to stay in front of this? But we're continuing our community policing efforts because we know that it takes more than just enforcement action and arrests. It takes a community effort to fix community issues. In June, the mayor, Commissioner Henderson, former city manager, aren't I, met with some of the faith leaders in our community, and the purpose of that meeting was to seek ways to try to curb the violence that we were seeing back in June. It was a very positive meeting, and I was able to share some information with that group, and I think they were very proactive in the, every week following that, going out into the community to areas that we were seeing violence. And fortunately, I believe that that has made an impact. And one of our long-term projects that we have that starts in just a few days is our School Resource Officer Program. There wasn't a chance I was going to get away from here today without talking about that. For the first time ever, when school starts this year in the city of Paducah, we'll have three Paducah police officers in our schools, full-time, and that's their sole purpose and their sole job. But the key to that is, is it's not just about the safety and security of our kids. The goal of the program is to build strong relationships between the police and the kids in our community, and also for those officers to serve as positive role models within the community and for our kids to see. I did mention enforcement actions and arrests, because that is a component of policing and of keeping our community safe. Prior to the beginning of this summer, I reinstituted what we call a Flex Team. That's a, consists of basically two officers, that their full-time job is to monitor certain areas and take enforcement action, what we call hotspot areas. We use data to basically drive our areas of enforcement where we're seeing upticks in crime or calls for service, and, and so those folks were, that's been their, their main focus for the last few months. Additionally, we've seen an increase in our drug enforcement efforts, resulting in a 50% increase in charges and arrests, and as you can see from the previous slides, those efforts have also led to an increase in gun charges and gun arrests as well. I want to say that it's without question that drugs and drug use have a direct correlation to the crime in our community, and specifically the violent crime, from thefts and burglaries, sexual offenses, assaults, but especially violent crime. And one of the other areas that we've focused and worked really hard on is having a good relationship with our federal partners, to make sure that we're utilizing all the resources that we have available to us, and that, you know, we, there was mention earlier about the federal agencies and their building that, that's going up out there. That's a really good thing for Paducah, that provides resources from the FBI, the ATF, and all the other acronyms that come along with the, the federal government. The last thing I want to mention is that overall, crime in the city of Paducah is down. We saw a drastic decrease in 2020, mainly what we believe to be due to the pandemic, but I think it's also attributed to the policing that we've been doing, to the community effort that this community has done over the past several years. This isn't a one-time fix, a one-year fix, this is a prolonged effort, and though we may have some blips in, in what we're seeing right now, I think overall, it's important to note that crime is down. We saw historic level decreases in 2020. We're down 4% below that overall from crime reports so far this year. So we're hoping that trend continues. We did have, like I said, you know, those violent episodes, where we had some folks doing some things in the community, and hopefully that's curtailed for now. That's our, that's our hope, anyway. When we compare our numbers to this time in 2019, which was more of a normal year, there's a 20% decrease in crime. So I think that's very significant for you guys to know, as well as for the, the folks that come and visit our city and live here to know that Paducah is still very safe. And I'll try to entertain any questions that you may have.
What do you attribute the 40% decrease in burglaries, and what do you attribute that to? Just shooting?
I don't know yet. The, the thing that the pandemic and COVID in general has caused is such an anomaly with crime in general in the statistics, because we've never gone through anything where businesses are shut down, and folks are staying at home, and people are traveling the roads for the, the period of time that we saw, so I don't have a really good answer for that one. I wish I could take full credit for it, but I can't. Not yet.
Not yet. Earned that.
So going back to that slide on, on deaths, was there a slide? I don't know where that was, but go.
On deaths?
Yeah, or murders? I'm not sure.
That one.
Murder, yeah. So in 2021, we've had two, two murders, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was three, I guess. Just two? Have both of those been, been solved, or someone's been arrested?
We have one that's still outstanding, he's wanted.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's active arrest warrants for him.
I wanted to ask, the School Resource Officers, you have three for the five city schools? Are they rotating among the schools?
So one is assigned to Paducah Tillman, one to the middle school, and then one rotates between the elementary schools.
And does that include, you know, a few years ago, we had the concern that I think worked out fine about the traffic at the early, when they're dropping off at school, and at the end, and you would have somebody at the school, like on Park Avenue, which is my route, there in front of McNabb every day. Is, will that continue as well, or?
We will try to have somebody there every day.
When you can.
Yeah, a lot of that depends on the staffing that we have and other calls that are going on at that time. But, you know, we haven't had major issues since the school crossing guards are no longer with us, and the, believe it or not, the signage that we put out, that the schools put out in the roadway on some of the, the non-state maintained roads, the one by Clark Elementary does a really good job. People stop for that when nobody's in the crosswalk, and the school's not even in session, so.
And, you know, I, I've had, contacted recently, we have people that have talked to me about speeding in neighborhoods and running across stop signs, but I, I mean, I see it everywhere, in a lot of places, so, you know, I don't know if you just want us to continue to let you know if we get those, but man, people do drive fast, especially in neighborhoods, well, all over, anywhere they do, and also they just go through the stop signs.
They do, and that was, there was actually a story that came out yesterday or the day before, that nationally, the fatality rate is increasing, people are driving faster, their driving skills are decreasing. I don't know what the pandemic, how that caused that, but that's, that's something that we're also seeing on the national level as well.
So to that point, you know, I, I do get some emails from time to time about particular neighborhoods, and you want that feedback?
Sure.
So that you can at least put it into a database, or, you know, somehow could track it, you know, and?
Yeah, that's exactly what we do. We have a, a database where we track that, and then our officers are given that list of areas to extra patrol. We also have speed trailer that we pass around into different locations, and that list is pretty long of the areas that it goes to, so it spends some time there. What that does is that captures the data for us as well, to let us know if there are people speeding, because it may be one car that comes through there once every two days speeding. Is that a resource? Do we want to devote somebody over there for that one, one or two times? But it also tells us the times that folks are coming through there and their speeds as well. So again, we go back to that data-driven policing, we try to be smart and put out the resources and use technology to our benefit.
I send myself emails almost every other day, since I'm the commissioner, I just send it to myself. But there is a problem, you know, even where I live, not just speeding, 10, 11 o'clock at night, sometimes 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, cars coming through, I mean, speeding, engines revved up, loud music, throwing, I come out just about every morning, and I'm picking up cups and paper and all kinds of stuff out of the yard, with folk, food just throw out, thrown out, out of the windows and things. So that is, you know, like I said, I haven't gotten any emails from other citizens, but I, I experience that almost every day.
Yeah.
It's an issue. Let me, let me ask you another question even about the resource officers. I know that, we, we've talked about this months ago, but I know that we want the resource officers to be mentors to the kids. So what kind of things will the resource officers be doing to make sure that, that mentorship goes on, as opposed to just being there to enforce laws and, and perhaps arrest kids?
Yeah, that's not the goal at all. We're not going into the schools to arrest kids. That, that's not what we're there for.
Well, I know that.
So, you know, the, the plan there is, is number one, they have to be introduced, there has to be a level of comfort. And so each individual person that's going to those schools, the, the high school will be different than the middle school, the middle school will be different from the grade schools, and so they're looking for those ways to do that, to interact, and they're talking with the principals and the teachers, and trying to figure out the best ways for them to do that. So, but the first and most important thing is for them to get in and get comfortable, and we're probably not going to see a whole lot of extra things out of them for the first several months. Again, this is a brand-new program, we're trying to figure it out. We have some guidance from the federal government, because this is sponsored through a federal grant, the COPS grant, that, that controls some of what we do, even like truancy and things like that, we are not to be involved in that. So, and that's a directive basically from the Department of Justice. So we're looking for those opportunities. They're also going to be attending some training as well, National School Resource Officer Training, to provide them with some of those ideas and look for those best practices on ways to do exactly what you're talking about.
Finally, I want to say thank you. I did call you, also with a major employer that was trying to recruit someone here and had, they'd run against that about the high crime rate, and I think you may have even called them back and personally and talked to them to explain it, so thank you very much, and thanks for everything you guys do.
I appreciate that, and, and I've, I've argued with those people, they've called and asked if we wanted to share that on our website, and obviously I don't, because I tell them their math is wrong, it's bad data, but unfortunately, we can't change that, because they're just taking the FBI numbers and comparing it to the census. So I wish they would use, if they would Google Paducah and population during the daytime, they would see that it's significantly different.
So, yeah, I just, I want to echo Commissioner Wilson's, thanks for all the work that you do. I know that, you know, resources are limited, personnel's limited at times, and I know you'd like to have more people to get done, but I think you do a great job with the, you know, with the staff that you have, and, and also I want to give you a special thanks for helping out with, you know, our, what's going on out on I-24. Chief Laird participated in our I-24 meeting, you know, we got some tough stuff going on out there, you know, with some deaths and trying to figure out what to do, so appreciate your input on that as well.
And we made some progress on that, getting them to, to lower the speed limit down.
We sure did.
There as well. So I'm hoping that tomorrow's meeting that they have will also do some, take some other efforts to extend that work zone, and if we slow people down, leading into that, leading up to, to the area where the collisions are happening, I really believe that that will, if there is a collision, it will definitely mitigate the damage that's done by a vehicle that's going a lot slower.
It's been a good team effort so far, so thanks, thanks for your help.
Yeah, and, you know, you, you've complimented me, but there's no way that I could do what's done here without the, the staff of the Police Department, the 911 Center. They're the ones that are out there every day, pulling those guns off the street, talking with the kids on the side of the road, and, you know, they're doing that, working overtime, because we are short. Again, I couldn't get out without that plug either. It's not that, that I'm asking for more people, I'm just trying to fill the, the spots that we have. we have. But a lot of that's just because of, of the academy being shut down for a period of time, and we're making significant progress with that. But it is challenging when you're working with, you know, about 10 or 12 fewer people.
Well, please pass along our thanks to your team.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
City Manager, any comments? Are you wide-eyed?
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Just would like to take the opportunity to, to, to express my appreciation and true appreciation for the confidence in allowing us to become part of the team. We're excited to be part of the community, still looking for housing and going through that. So, so I don't know if one of those cottage houses might, might fit the bill or not. But, you know, the, the community's been welcoming, you know, last week, you may remember, we were talking about and got asked, we were in a meeting and somebody asked if, about the fire hose, and I said, no, it's, it's the fire hydrant, but it, we've taken it down a notch a little bit, but the team's been great. I can't say enough about, you know, the team that, and you all know this, the team that you had here in place, you know, top-notch, and they've, they've shown that, been very welcoming, been very helpful. Kudos to Michelle, who's been guiding me around and, and getting me to where I needed to go and keeping me on task at, at times when I want to talk a little bit more than I should. But it's, it's been great, and it's exciting, and, you know, I'm sure I'll hear from Chief tonight. We're going to go out at 10 o'clock to start meeting some of that department this evening, and I'm sure I'll hear about the, the staffing level again. But we're, we're doing that, and it's, it's an exciting time to be part of Paducah. This morning, I got to meet at Etcedera Cafe with Commissioner Henderson and, and a group of, of gentlemen. I won't, it was, but it was good. That's what I enjoy. I enjoy getting out and meeting in the community and meeting our team, and so we've, we've been doing a lot of that this first week and a half, and looking forward to it. And Commissioner, you were, you were talking about the numbers and the amounts of funds that this, this commission is allocated for projects, but it's exciting to be a, part of the community when you think about the other private projects that are going on and the building and stuff. I mean, we were talking a couple of weeks ago, what, close to a million dollars in private investment in projects that are ongoing with, with everything, you know, along the lines. And so it's exciting time to be Paducah, and I'm glad to be part of it.
Great. Thank you so much. We are awfully glad to have you, so welcome. Any other comments from any other commissioners?
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: Issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal, or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 618101F; A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 618101G.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?